Okay, let's call the April Food Day Special.
Regular.
State Regular. Zoning Commission, meeting to order. We have, oh no. Have we got everybody? No, we don't have Jackie. Okay, Gavin, can you sit for Jackie, please?
I can. I will need to recuse myself from one, so do we need...
Okay, well, maybe we avoid that by having Joe. Okay? All right. So now we have Joe appointed to serve for Jackie, Bados. Okay, the minutes of the March 18th meeting are the next subject. There were a few people here. Kevin?
Four of us.
Four of us. Four of you, three of you are here. Any comments or changes?
Dave, I read the minutes and I was at the meeting, and I don't see any changes needed in those minutes, and recommend that we approve them as they were submitted.
Yeah, second.
Second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next order of business is a public hearing. Application 1913 of Stephen Hennessy for a cafe permit at Apple Cinema. Mr. Secretary, could you read it?
You're basically gonna read it for me. Application 1913 of Stephen Hennessy, agent E&amp;A I&amp;G, Simsbury Commons Limited Partnership Owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury Zoning Regulations for a Cafe Liquor Permit at Apple Cinema on the property located at 502 Wushie Hill Road. Accessors map B-20, block 580, lot 001-B, Zone B-3.
Thank you. Okay, is the applicant here to... Please come up and identify yourself.
If you want to stand.
It would be better if you stand at the podium, please, because there's a camera aimed there.
My camera shot.
I know, that's weird.
My name is Mr. Hennessy. I'm an agent for the folks in Apple Cinema who are applying for a cafe liquor permit. And they've asked me to assist them in the process. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. And I'm going to see if I can get a permit.
Okay, questions of the commission?
But do they intend to do with the permit?
Serve liquor.
Which liquor? Liquor or wine and beer?
Full liquor permit. Cafe allows them to serve wine, beer, and alcohol, which they would like to serve to customers attending the cinema and hopefully gather in some additional customers by virtue of that fact of having drinks available for people to consume in the lobby prior to movies or during movies, and also to take into their seating area.
So is there a service bar in the lobby, then? Is that what you're proposing?
Well, they are going to be constructed for this area in the lobby and some small seating area as well.
Is that in this diagram somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's see if the... Some diagram in the lobby of the... Lefted in, in the neighborhood of Apple Cinema. Well, with that alcohol there.
That doesn't show on us. We don't have that.
Yeah, we don't have that. Can we see that?
Sure.
We have one of the whole mall.
We don't have that.
No.
We have a parking lot.
Robin, do you have the site plan? You don't have a site plan for this applicant?
I just have the little plan that you guys have, which shows the building with the parking areas. I do not have an internal layout.
Where's the bar? Over here.
Could that permission like copies so that everybody can pick a little?
That'd be great, yeah.
Yes, please.
So the customers will walk out? There's no service within the theater? Waiter service?
And they do not anticipate having a stand-up bar in certain situations, where employees can serve the customers?
And how big is this? Is this the area within the lobby?
Approximately 10 foot wide for the service bar. And then a few tables and chairs standing around.
There's a couple of tables there now, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And a couple more. Not intending to have this lobby used as a big seating area just as a means for customers.
And I think you said they can take the drinks into the movie with them?
That's correct.
And you do this in Torrington already?
We're in the process of applying in Torrington. We actually have one in Barkhamsted. And had that for seven years.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any restriction on how many drinks one person can buy?
One time. You can only have one drink at one time unless you're accompanied. For instance, a husband or wife, a husband could buy two drinks, one for himself.
So it's similar to, okay.
And the first drink has to be substantially consumed or a second drink can be.
I'm sorry, could you... Where in the lobby is this? Because we weren't all...
The black dot is over there. Can you see that?
Yes. Okay, yes, thank you. Right.
Oh, it's in the other corner.
Where's the black dot?
It's over here.
Oh, 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 yeah, it says bar.
Well, the other one's drink dispensary, so...
Yeah.
Depends on which one you want. It's the concession.
But it's not a retail.
It's a self-service concession?
You get your own popcorn and stuff?
Oh, self-serve.
Self-serve concession?
I guess it means you can walk up to it.
That's where you get popcorn?
That's where it is now.
Oh, but they don't bring it to you. It means they don't bring it to you, then?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
You buy it at the counter.
Self-serve candy display.
It looks like the cafe license category requires service of food. Is there food that meets their requirements?
They're going to have the minimum food required, which is soups and sandwiches. So there'll probably be a very limited number of sandwiches and some sort of soup item to meet the requirement. However, we would call for it.
Popcorn count as food.
Right, so this looks like you have five seats in front of the counter. Is that not what the plan is?
All those little bumps out there are the current seats.
Yeah, what are they?
I don't know what they are, actually. But there are no seats planned.
All right, and where is the sitting area?
Well, they're gonna have tables and chairs scattered around the lobby. They haven't shown the ones that are there now, but there'll be several there.
Excuse me, when you gave your name, you didn't give your address. That's one of the things that we require in our...
My mailing address is Post Office Box 5 in Riverdale, Connecticut.
Mike, you have any questions? Seems pretty straightforward, Mr. Chairman. Joe?
I... My question was answered, thank you.
Okay. Gavin, this is one you're not saying again?
I'm good.
Any other questions from the...
You haven't had any issues in any of the other theaters?
No, so far not.
How many theaters does Apple own?
Me and Connecticut.
All around, all over.
I don't know the number across the country. There are several in Massachusetts where I know some.
And how many of them? What percentage of them have alcohol permits?
I know they're attempting to get one in Massachusetts at the moment. They've got the one in Barkhamsted. We're in the process in Torrington. I think that's everything at the moment.
Okay.
They haven't been, as owners, that long, so they're expanding, running out some new things.
And you said Barkhamsted has a cafe permit now and Torrington is pending?
It has a tavern permit.
Tavern permit.
Yeah.
What did you apply for? Is there a strategy here?
They just felt that they wanted to make an entry into the business without getting into the alcohol so they could begin with. And they choose to change to a cafe at some future time. But I just wanted a beer.
And is it possible for someone to take their alcoholic beverage outside?
No, that's not the case.
And what stops them from doing that?
Hopefully, the employees.
Okay, well, everything's self-service, so...
If you'd like any other restaurant or bar, you can print the report out the door with them.
And in this case, you're giving it to them in what kind of a container?
Plastic container, but that's not uncommon in restaurants. The staff has to be advised to just not allow people to wander away with them.
Did I miss something here? The bar with beer and wine, is it self-serve?
No, it's a service bar. The employee has to...
Oh, okay. Okay, I thought that's what you said. Yeah, okay. And so the wine is... Is that served in bottles, or how is that served?
No, it would be served in glasses as well.
So there's no...
It's served full bottles as well, no.
Okay, so there would be no circumstance where an unfully consumed bottle of wine can be taken out when the person leaves?
No, that's allowed in Connecticut.
It's allowed under cafe permits, so...
Whether they're yours, but, okay?
Yeah, okay.
But they don't necessarily serve bottles too.
Got it, thank you.
But I believe with a cafe permit, they could.
Right.
They could serve bottles, yes. That is, it's the question of control when someone has drunk too many drinks. And, you know, they're not really set up for that like a restaurant is, so I think they prefer to have easier-to-control one drink at a time. Better profit, too.
Okay.
And the employees serving the drinks would have to be tips trained, then? Is that correct?
No, that's not required in Connecticut. They would have to be of age, obviously. Minimum age in Connecticut is alcohol is 18. And they would have to be 18, and they would have to be trained in how to card.
Yeah, so you have 18-year-olds serving, carding counterparts.
Do we require that they designate what area?
Not specifically, but if somebody comes in with a cafe permit, they're saying it's the whole premise. In which case, people are taking their drinks into the theaters. It would be the premise of Apple Cinema's apple hole. I think Mike put on here, though, that for future reference, that all of it has to be in the existing structure and that no one is allowed to go outside. If at any such time they had a patio or anything of that sort, they would have to come back for an approval from the zoning company to do that.
You have to do a section signature for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Can you pull this up to the public? I see anyone here who would like to speak to this application?
I have one question.
Name and address, please.
My name is Joe Galley S. I live at 283 Hot Metal Street. I have a question about the... How, not private, but most of the time when people serve alcohol in a place like the Gilson Theater up in Winston, it's one big theater in which everybody's sitting at a table or whatever and drinking. The service people are milling around. They're always seeing them. They're watching the movie. So there's less likely a chance of an underage person to drink because they're watching. In this situation, you have private rooms. Does anybody see monitoring these rooms as they bring drinks in?
Excuse me. Address the chair, please, and not the applicant.
All right, cool. I would ask you then, Mr. Chairman. So I'm concerned about having somebody bring a drink into a private, un...
Supervised area.
Supervised area and giving it maybe to a person underage. And why do they need to take it to a movie? So, that's my question.
So are you against the application, or...
I would like to know that it would be monitored. They already think that we have enough of a problem with our children, that they are unsupervised in many areas that don't, anything gets out of control when they're not supervised, when we are. So I'm just looking at the possibility, if there's going to be liquor in this particular situation, private rooms, unsupervised, how is that going to relate? And may have nothing to do with anything. May not be an issue ever, but what about that one time that there is? And that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else like to speak to this application?
Actually, I have one more question.
Just one technical thing. I didn't have an affidavit provided to me. Do you have the affidavit signed? Thank you.
I do have one more question.
Okay.
Is there a time period during which alcohol is going to be served? Or is it all day, every day?
Well, technically, yes, but it would be whenever the theater's open for business, prior to the first show, they would make alcohol available and then...
So even for like an early matinee or something like that? It's gonna be?
They open, because they're planning on opening around 1:00, so they would open around 12:30. And open until legal closing hours in Connecticut. Probably stop serving maybe half an hour before the end of the last show, something like that. They don't want people hanging around when their movies are done. I just know that's not part of their business to sell alcohol. Just to supplement the movie business and hopefully get some more customers.
And so is there a requirement that you buy a ticket for the movie before you can buy something at the bar?
Be open to the public, just like any other cafe. You can walk in theoretically, buy a glass of wine or something, sit on the table, and consume, and then leave.
Would you object to a provision that said that if a couple were to buy alcohol, that both would have to be of age?
No, they have to be...
It's early, the law.
That's early, the law.
It is? So if you walk in with your girlfriend and you were 21 and she wasn't, you bought a drink?
They both have to be carded, right?
Yeah.
No, a couple, you could sell to one, the adult. Obviously, the intention is that the other person did not consume that. You could have signs to that effect or something from the employees. I think it might be difficult to police because one person can come up to the counter and buy a glass of wine, and then go back and sit with the other person, who might not have known they were together at all. So the force of will is too difficult. For one of them to go into the movie theater while the other one goes out and buys the drink. So I think it would be difficult for this person. And it's not required in most situations under other Connecticut licenses.
And I suppose if there were provision, you'd have no illegal couples that would come to the bar? Okay. Any comments?
I was just wondering how, will ushers monitor this at all?
Ushers will monitor it. Obviously, in dark theater, it's gonna be very difficult if somebody wants to break the law and pass a drink to a minor person. That could be done, just like it can in many restaurants, in booths. There is no requirement in a booth situation, for instance, that all of the persons in the booth be adults. So someone in the booth could certainly pass it on, pour it into somebody else's glass. It happens. It's not a huge problem, but it does happen.
Are there ushers in the individual theaters?
There are, but they're not present for the entire movie. They go in and out as needed.
Okay, so there is some supervision that...
They do, they go in, they're supposed to check periodically to make sure there are no other problems. And they're looking for that, but again, in a dark theater, it's gonna be pretty hard to tell who's got what.
Well, is the frequency of ushers checking the theaters, the individual theater area, different in Barkhamsted versus Torrington? One having liquor and one having that? So there would be no greater frequency of surveying?
Yes. I'm only saying that they haven't seen the need for that until they become aware of the problem. Now, has it happened? Possible, but it hasn't come to their attention. There's been no police referrals or, except parents who said it happened in the theater, not today, neither.
And I guess that's handled through the normal...
Alcohol in the theater, they're on the cafe license. If it's controlled, we notify them. We have to pay the penalty if that's not controlled.
That's a question. Was the police chief asked about this at all?
He goes to sign off on the liquor permit. So what happens is after you guys give your approval, it goes around to the chief of police, myself.
I was just wondering if there are any instances even before they had a license, that you couldn't bring it in?
So when it goes down there, the chief will definitely be looking at seeing, obviously, Apple Cinema has history and that they have owned the business down there before. But they will have history on the cinema that was there previously. And obviously, it will be up to his discretion as to whether or not he feels appropriate to sign off on the permit.
So I missed the sequence description, Robin. Are you saying the police chief has not seen this application?
He has not seen this application. Of course, you guys first. If you give your approval, then it will go downstairs to him, then it will come upstairs to me.
Our job is to protect the neighborhood and make sure it's appropriate in that location.
I should let you know that the park marshal has signed it.
Okay. Do you want me to close the application? Close the public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing on application 1913.
A second.
Second, by Donna. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cared, six, nothing. Okay, next, public hearing.
Application 1914 of Eaglewood Hospitality Group LLC, agent, 1820 House LLC owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury Zoning Regulations for a hotel liquor permit on a property located at 731 Hot Metal Street. Accessors map T-10, block 203, lot 001-C&amp;D, Zone SC-1.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Riley, Eaglewood Hospitality Group, 52 Spring Drive, Riverdale, Connecticut.
Thank you. Could you explain what the application is?
The application is for a hotel liquor permit for the 1820 House, the restaurant space that was formerly Metro B's. They moved out across the street, and we're gonna be assuming operation of the food and beverage for the entire hotel. And the hotel permit is being applied for, you know, to be able to service the hotel guests in their rooms as well as the restaurant space.
See that? The restaurant was not able to serve room service alcohol during that?
So there was formerly a restaurant... Metro B's had a restaurant permit there, and prior to that, there was a hotel permit there. However, I don't know... I submitted a copy of it. It's on the district control commission's records for some reason, they're not really really zoning.
Any special exception?
We have nothing. The only special exception we had on file was dated 1985, and it was for the restaurant license. Obviously, we could find no evidence. We searched the Towns End stock office. We searched in the research to our files, and we couldn't find anything from the top license.
Interesting, okay. So the only difference between the restaurants and the hotel permit is you can have room service?
Yes.
I understand it. Anybody have any questions in the commission? I don't really understand any of that. It is a pretty clear situation, I think.
Right.
Okay, anybody in the...
Well, I'll ask a question. So are you new to the restaurant business?
No, sir. I've been in the restaurant business for over 27 years. So, you know, we currently... This is our first full-service restaurant with a liquor permit. And I've been, you know, involved in it as a partner. But we currently operate seven other locations in the greater Hartford area, primarily servicing, you know, business and industry, so more like onsite restaurant in office buildings, cafeterias more or less. And previous experience, I started out with the Max Restaurant Group. And my partner and I met there a long time ago. And then subsequent to that, we also worked for the Hot Tomatoes Restaurant Group, then Rankers and all that. So we've got ample restaurant experience in terms of operating.
Just giving you a chance to advertise for the...
Appreciate it.
Any other questions with the commission?
No.
Anyone in the public that'd like to speak to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for application 1914.
Second.
Second, by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, carried, six, nothing. The application is... The public hearing is closed. Okay, application 1913 of Stephen Hennessy. So are we prepared to make a motion on this application?
Well, Dave, based on the criteria that are stated in our regulation, while I have some concerns about this application, or, you know, in fact, the movie theater is a setting for a cafe permit, I think it's consistent with our regulations, the application. And so I would support it. Support approval of the application.
Donna?
Yeah, I'm hesitant, but okay.
I've got my pages mixed up. I can't find the right page. This is E&amp;A I&amp;G, right? And we have a staff has given us the proposed...
Get me ready for motion?
I think we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application 1913 of Stephen Hennessy, agent, E&amp;A slash I&amp;G, Simsbury Towns Limited, partnership owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury Zoning Reg, for a cafe liquor permit at Apple Cinema on a property located at 502 Hot Wushie Hill Road. Special exception is subject to the following conditions. One, administrative zoning permit is required. Two, approval is only for activities within the existing structure. Exchange of service area of alcohol beverages, such as a patio, requires approval from the zoning commission.
A second. Anything by Mike? I'm in the discussion. Discussion on the motion?
No thanks, Dave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, carried, six, nothing. Thank you. Okay, the next application. Is Eaglewood Hospitality Group. This is even more straightforward. Are you prepared to make a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application 1914 of Eaglewood Hospitality Group LLC, agent, 1820 House LLC owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury Zoning Regulations for a hotel liquor permit on a property located at 731 Hot Metal Street. Special exception is subject to the following... Special exception is subject to the following conditions. They don't need an administrative, do they?
I actually think they might come in for one, but they should be on their...
Okay. One, an administrative zoning permit is required. Two, expansion of outdoor seating areas slash patios require approval from the zoning commission. Approval is for change of permit type only with no expansion of the premises.
Give me a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Bruce.
Okay, actually, I do have a question. Is it not an expansion of the premises that includes the carriage house?
It is an expansion of the house that includes the carriage house.
Yeah, because this includes carriage house, right? You're going to service the carriage house.
That is an expansion of the house. I don't trust that for the zoning.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, was that understood by everyone on the board before you guys approved it?
Well, we haven't approved the motion yet, so I could change my motion to include the carriage house.
Yes, you could.
Okay. Well, then I would say with no expansion of the premises except the carriage house.
And I'll second once more.
Second by Bruce. Okay. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried six nothing. Thank you. We have a new application, Tyler English, for a site plan amendment for change in use from retail to personal trainer gym on the property located at 141 West Street. Is there someone here to explain?
Tyler English, six David Drive, Senator Connecticut.
Thank you. And this is just a change in use for...
The address is 141.
Right.
Are you taking the whole building?
The, I guess you could say the left side of it, which used to be the main race lane.
Oh, okay. So the driving school is still...
The common hallway and Ivan driving school.
Driving school is still there, yeah.
Isn't the house the one that portioned?
And that's just one big movement?
It's really just one big...
It's got a loft space, yeah.
Has some open storage in the back, but it's basically just a wide open forward floor.
And you'd be using the loft?
Yes. I plan on using, because I'll be, you know, my previous facilities, I downsized tremendously over the last 18 months. I just have three facilities, and now I just have a private client list. And I plan on opening up kind of like a pre-workout hangout area where they can, for people who... Because there's a small, there's not much of an overlap. There's 45-minute sessions, so there's 15 to 30 minutes. The way I book my classes are 5:30 and then 7:00 and then 8:30. So there's time where people might come in early so they can go hang out up there and do their prehab before they come down for their next session. So that would be one side of the loft. The other side of the loft would be almost like a client lounge and sales area, I guess you can call it, where I might have a workstation for myself.
No alcohol, probably?
Well, if they bring them, I mean...
This is where they're going to roll over here.
I have some who would have raised their hand yes to the previous, yes. Many, actually. It's never food, it's always alcohol.
Okay, staff has some comments.
From the administrative standpoint, we have everything we need?
You do. There's a parking agreement that's been on file and approved by the board since 1995. So they're all set as far as parking, it has more use and the zoning jurisdiction. So basically, this is just the finality of a change of use, and staff is just recommending, obviously, administrative zoning permit.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
So if the next tenant wanted to switch back to retail, we would have to do this whole process over again?
Potentially.
We should have a conversation about doing this differently in the future.
Just so you guys know, and we're kind of a sidebar from this, and the zoning regulations that we're kind of overhauling and addressing right now, which I'll get to get back to in a couple weeks when the zoning officer again, one of the things that we're going to have in there is the ability for staff to administratively sign off on something like this where they can have more use. The parking is there, there's no external changes, so that you guys don't have to see this.
They don't have to come.
Okay, so your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 1917 of Tyler English agent, LBH LLC for owner for a site, a plan amendment for a change in use from retail to a personal trainer gym on the property located at 141 West Street. Site plan amendment is subject to the following condition, and that condition is an administrative zoning permit is required.
No, I will second that.
Second by Joe. Any discussion further? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried six nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now it's an adult race lane.
I was never in there, one of them.
My girls dragged me in there more than once. Now my wife will probably drag me in there more than once.
Okay. Application 1919 of Lou George. This is a site plan amendment. Staff recommends approval. Can you hear from the applicant, please?
I am not Lou George. My name is Stephanie Ma from Hassan and George, 945 Pop Metal Street. I'm here for BMG Properties LLC. Again, it's...
Back up, Stephanie.
Sorry?
Can you back up for a second? You went so fast, I didn't hear your last name.
Ma, spelled M-A.
Okay.
Okay. So today, it's an application for a change of use from an office to an apartment.
Okay. And that's within the permitted uses in that room?
So this is a use that's permitted with commission approval. This was actually, this area was already been converted, and this was subject to violation procedure that was issued by me quite a few months ago. In order to obtain this permit, they had to get a modification from the state fire marshal's office, which he did obtain. He was at his board at the last meeting. They have a modification for the parking that would require service, and the overall square footage, they simply have parameters that's called out for 40% for the total floor area. So now that the requirement is to legalize this unit.
Mr. Curious, what was the fire marshal's mind?
Is that that area under the roof with no windows is kind of concerned?
I think it should be...
Especially since it's going to end up as a sleeping area?
Yeah, it should be attached to your packets. It's the requirement for automatic fire sprinklers, of course, to be installed.
Oh, that's going to take care of not having the windows in.
So it looks like they're not going to have to put the sprinklers just in there.
So that space has no windows, and that's cool.
No, I think there are camera windows in there.
There's only a skylight, right?
There are some windows up there. It's got a back entrance, so I think Mike...
No, just this space under the front, in the living room has no window.
I think Mike, the way he worded it, it's really not above the liquor establishment, it's above the back of the restaurant. So if you're looking out the back of the building, there's a hallway, you kind of go in and you go up the stairs and you go off to the left. And so it's on the south side of the building. It's a pretty small area. There are windows there, kind of got a half kitchen in there.
Well, the building official cites that space as being above the liquor store.
There is an apartment above the liquor store. This is not the only apartment on the premise, but this space, I've been in it, it's not really above the liquor store. It's to the back of, it's to the rear of the restaurant. And if you look at the floor plan, you can kind of see, see where it says restaurant dry storage on the first floor. If you flip the plan over, this is above that area, and that is the area that we're looking at, where it says living room, sleeping area, restroom, deck, so fridge. So it's not the apartment that's above the liquor store.
Well, it says the deputy state building inspector cites the reason for enabling or allowing the exception is that the dwelling units on the second floor are provided with two independent exits. And it says this decision is based on existing conditions which preclude compliance with requirements for new construction. And his exception is very specific that he's allowing a third residential unit in there without providing sprinklers.
Right.
So in that respect, it's in conformance with the modification. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the modification just for car them, it says that the laundry storage room on the first floor is only accessible by the access to the dwelling. So when you go in where that laundry room is, it's the entry to this apartment anyway, which was supposed to be office space. So it doesn't give you access to other areas. So that would be in conformance with this.
So should we assume like the last application where the police chief hasn't seen the liquor permit application, should we assume that the town building official and fire marshal have not seen the exception granted by the state?
No, they have seen this, which is why they had to go for the modification. Our fire marshal went and sent off or approved this...
And now they have?
And now they've been given this modification. So in order for him to pull building permits, both the fire marshal will need to sign off in forms with the modification, and the building official will have to...
And have they done that?
No, they can't pull permits until this approval is granted. Permits were approved for an office space. So the space exists, but the space exists under our regulations and the building official's review as office space. It was converted to a residential unit, like I said, illegally, and now they're coming through the process to legalize it. So yes, our building official will look to make sure that it meets all of the building requirements for a residential unit.
But my point is, there's an exception being...
For the state marshal.
From the state fire marshal.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to be clear, if the sequence of events, the zoning commission evaluates this application before the town building official and the town fire marshal see that there's been an exception granted by the state fire marshal. Is that right?
No. The state, the fire marshal was aware of the issue and denied the permit for it, which is how they got to the modification part. So they are aware of what is going on because they were involved in that process. Normally, what would happen is someone would propose this, take the violation out of this and let it's after the fact. We would send this off to our fire marshal as part of your application process. They would review and comment back. Obviously, they've already reviewed this, which is then to the state fire marshal for the modification. And then the building official doesn't particularly see these until after you guys approve it and they come in for their building permits. That would be the normal course of action.
I raise the question in part because I'm not sure why, there wouldn't have been a correction of Henry Miga's error in asserting that this space is above the liquor store when, as you point out, it is not. And that's a significant point in the application, right?
That I can't, I don't know. I think it's just the confusion as to when you're looking at the floor plan, but it's definitely not the one above the liquor store. I physically didn't, so what I approved to see of it is this space.
And this is a note that Henry Miga visited on 322.
Yeah.
So it pairs with the state modification, it's in compliance with regulations and zoning.
Yes.
Any other questions from commission? Joe?
No, thank you.
Kevin?
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I think we're ready for motion.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application 1919 of Louis and George Esquire agent, BMG Properties LLC owner for a site plan amendment for a change of use from office space to an apartment on that property located at 560 to 566 Hot Metal Street. Site plan amendment is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required. Two, applicant is to provide copy of parking lease with the Connecticut DOT for issuance of certificate of occupancy of apartment above retail liquor store and restaurant.
Second? We hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried six nothing. Okay. Anything from staff?
You guys should have correspondence and come use from the Connecticut Siting Council. Last week, on March 28th, last Thursday, the Connecticut Siting Council has approved the B and M plan for the solar project off in Hoston Grove. So we've attached that letter just so you can reference that if you need it.
In reading that letter, it appears that the state modifies the conform, or monitors the conformance to the application. And either we nor the zoning enforcement officer has any real involvement there?
No. So what would happen is unfortunately, if a complaint came into our office, we could refer it to the state, and the state would have the ability to go on the property to investigate. However, at this point in time, there's no ability, if there was an issue for staff, to go on the premise and look at any potential complaint that might come in.
So they really do control everything?
They do. For our project this side, yes.
Okay. Anything else for this evening?
No, that's all we have.
I hear motion?
So move.
Okay, and second?
Mike moved to a chair. Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for coming.